Madam, could you call?
Yes, Mayor. A quorum is present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Members of the public, we're going to do public comment. For members of the public that want to call in for the open session, you'll dial eight 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 two five one two nine four nine or two one five eight six one zero six nine four. The access code for today, May third, 2022, is two one two eight six seven one pound. Again, that's two one two eight six seven one pound. Operator, are there any callers?
No, Mayor, there are no callers.
All right. In the library lecture hall, are there any comments from the public?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Before we go into the agenda, I have a proclamation to present to the city clerk and the deputy city clerk. It's the proclaiming the fifty-third annual professional municipal clerk's week, May first to May seventh. And I guess that means they rule until then. Okay. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Is that like, we don't, you guys? Did you hear that? Okay. Their neutrality and impartiality, they do that. It's like, we don't, you know? Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore be it resolved that the week of May first to May seventh is hereby proclaim the Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in the City of Inglewood, California, and we further extend our appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Ayesha Thompson, and all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and for their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, presented this third day of May by the Mayor and City Council. Can we go over to the wall and take a picture? Haven't done that in a while. Okay, so we're going to item one, CSA one, and H one.
Warrant register.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye, DR one.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Council and all other legislative bodies of the city to continue to conduct public meetings via teleconference from May third, 2022 through June second, 2022 pursuant to Assembly Bill three six one.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. And just as a side, an aside, the last week of testing results from the county showed that we were up over twenty-one percent. That means more than one in every five person tested from Inglewood, tested positive, and so we're going to continue to be cautious. Consent calendar, items two and three. Consent calendar. Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
No, mine is a little bit mixed up. If I could just show the mayor, make sure I got the right ones. So I go from consent right here to, this is the correct ones, but my printing must have, no, they must have stapled it correctly. Okay, so we're, we're good.
Okay, we're good. We're, we're good. Okay, so now we're going to SPH one is what I have, setting a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Staff report requesting that a public hearing be set to consider an ordinance adding Article five point one to Chapter eight of the Inglewood Municipal Code regulating pedicabs and amending other relevant municipal code sections.
Set the public hearing from May seventeenth, 2022 at two P M. A one.
Thank you, Mayor. No oral reports from the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Mrs. City Attorney, CM one.
Thank you, Mayor. No oral reports from the City Manager's Office.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, CC one, oral reports of the City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. First of all, I would like to thank the Mayor and my colleagues for honoring and recognizing this week being Municipal Clerk Week. Just a brief background, so, you know, the folks out there will know it's not a an made-up event or a made-up recognition. In nineteen eighty-four, President Ronald Reagan signed a proclamation that officially declared Municipal Clerk's Week the first full week of May. In nineteen ninety-four and ninety-six, President Bill Clinton also signed proclamations confirming Municipal Clerk Week. And with that, I would like to wish all of our municipal clerks in our surrounding cities a happy Professional Municipal Clerk Week. Also, Mayor, I would like to wish everyone a happy Cinco de Mayo. It's on Thursday, May the fifth. And Cinco de Mayo is the anniversary of Mexico's victory over the French Empire at the Battle of Puebla in eighteen sixty-two. Also, Mayor, I would like to wish our mothers a Happy Mother's Day. You know, mothers are like a flower. Each one are, they are beautiful and unique, and I am strong because my mother raised me, and I would like to wish my mom a very special Happy Mother's Day. Thank you, and Happy Mother's Day from Quentin and myself. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my remarks.
Okay, so you guys know when it gets to us, she's already got Mother's Day and Cinco de Mayo covered. All right, so, all right, so start, so start thinking of something else.
Well, I didn't talk about the teachers. I left that for the councilwoman to talk about Teachers' Week this week. Okay.
Okay. The Housing Authority's in session, H two.
A staff report recommending adoption of a resolution adopting an updated administrative plan for the Section eight Housing Choice voucher program.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Well, during the Housing Authority, there are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We're ready for public comment. Any persons wishing to comment on any item concerning city business that elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time for one minute. Operator, are there any callers?
No, Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, we'll close the phone comments. Are there any persons present in the library lecture hall that wish to make a public comment?
Good afternoon, council members and Mr. Butts.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you. I brought two, I brought two tenants. Come on up. I brought two of my tenants. You wanted to talk to my tenants, right?
You say what now?
I brought two of my tenants with me.
No, they can speak for themselves, my man. No, 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 they didn't like, you're like the overseer or anything. You speak for whatever you want to speak to, and then they come individually. I said if they wanted to speak, wait a minute, if they wanted to speak individually, we only take comments individually. So now if you have a comment, you have twenty-six seconds left.
Oh, yeah, I just want to remind you people that there's no fees, that you guys can't be charging fees on this, uh, for the registration fees without, without taking a vote. Not your vote, the taxpayer vote. Proposition two eighteen, it's right in there. It's right in line. And you have to prove you're in compliance. I don't have to prove you're not. I mean.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other persons present that want to make a public comment?
Good evening. I have had questions asked to me from several community members who are saying that they are receiving letters from the city telling them that they have to pay a fee or cancel their Airbnbs. So I would like for this legislative body to please clarify if anyone is supposed to be paying a fee, if you guys rescinded the notice that you sent out asking for owners of Airbnbs to register. And then also, I would like to know exactly how I can get in contact with my city councilman, Eloy Morales, as well as the city attorney. I have called and left messages with both of them several times, emails as well, and no one will respond to me. So is there a certain protocol that I need to go about to communicate with them?
Okay, thank you. Okay, first of all, there's moratorium on the operation of Airbnbs. Okay, okay, on, on Airbnbs, and yes, you do have to register if you're going to have an Airbnb. So that those things, two things are true. And Council Morales will, and who was she trying to get on?
Ken Campos.
Well, Council Morales will be the one to be your point of contact.
And it's always the same number, three one zero, four one two, five three two zero, and we get the call. I haven't received any message.
So, so anyway, there you go. All right. So with that, we will close public comment. And that takes us all the way to council, Mayor and Council remarks. Councilman Dotson, District one.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone who came out to my town hall meeting last Wednesday. It really was great and was made great by the people who participated and you who were there. And John just joined us on Zoom. I would like to also thank the Mayor. The Mayor came out, first person to speak. He set the tone for the entire meeting. So thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
You, you really set the tone for that meeting. Chief Fadrona and his officers, I'd like to thank all them for coming out. Chris Jackson, Economic Development, thank you so much for your part in my meeting. Mr. Marine from Public Works, I'd like to thank you. Bill Thomas of Parkit, thank you so much for coming out. That was one of the interesting things that most of the people wanted to know about. Chris Roberts from the I T C Project and the Clippers Arena Project. She gave a very good update. If you didn't hear it, listen to it on my, uh, on my website. I want to thank Jason With from SoFi and Holloway Park gave an update, information on their department R project. I also want to thank the staff, especially Tom Bond and his staff. They came out and, and made a wonderful film for us. And last but not least, I want to thank Mrs. Gwendolyn Goodman and always my assistant, Alicia Smith, for putting together and making it a great success. And I don't want to forget those people who participated, those who came out. I, I understand, I know what an effort it takes to get people out to a meeting. So I want to thank all of them that came out. I want to not forget to say Happy Mother's Day. And with that, Mayor, everybody have a great rest of your day.
Very, very eloquent, sir. Councilman Padilla, District two.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So again, this coming Friday, you know, it is May sixth, but you know, we're celebrating the Cinco de Mayo dinner at the Knights of Columbus Hall. Stella and I I'll be there cooking all day, and dinners go from five till seven thirty. The Knights of Columbus Hall is on Manchester Boulevard and Playa del Rey. So hopefully you can come by. The following day, we're celebrating Fire Safety Day. So we're going to be at Fire Station one seventy-two, which is at eight ten Centinela, L.A. County Fire Station one seventy-two. And we're going to be doing a free pancake breakfast for everyone in, in the community throughout the City of Inglewood from nine to eleven thirty. We're going to be having some great, I mean, a bunch of really nice raffle prizes, free raffle. Everybody that comes, it's a ticket to get into the raffle. And so that'll be from nine to eleven thirty. My colleagues, everybody up here on the dais will be there. And so we're looking forward to visiting with you, the community members, to support and recognize our firefighters for the good and dangerous work they do every single day. So please come out, Fire Station one seventy-two, this Saturday from nine to eleven thirty. It's a family event, so bring everyone and share it with, with whoever you want. So if you've been up and down Centinela, I want to thank the, our Director of Public Works, our Assistant City Manager, Louis Atwell. You'll see that we've already taken off the first layer of the street surface. We are resurfacing, so we're redoing the whole street. So this is going to be a little bit of an inconvenience, and I get it. There'll be traffic in one direct, one lane of traffic in each direction intermittently throughout the day from, say, seven to five o'clock. When we can open it up both lanes in each direction, we will. But just be patient with us. Try to take alternate routes. This project, as far as the resurfacing part of it, is happening from La Cienega to La Brea. We hope to have it done by Saturday afternoon, maybe even earlier, but just be aware of that. So please be patient, understanding, but trust me, when it's done, as we say, it's going to be chulada. It's going to be beautiful, right? So, you know, there you go. We can't wait. So again, what's that, Eloy?
I said not to be confused with michelada.
Michelada. Hey, that's on Cinco de Mayo, Eloy, come on. So again, I want to wish everybody a Happy Mother's Day, all the mothers, and you don't have to be a paternal mother, you know, you know, when you're the big sister, the aunt, you know, whatever role you play, it's significant. So Happy Mother's Day on Mother's Day, you know, but every day. In Mexico, we celebrate it on May tenth, so Feliz Dia de las Madres. A todas las madres que están allá viendo esta junta, que tengan un feliz día de las madres. Ese día es el diez de mayo. Y con eso tengan un buen día. And with that, thank you and have a great day.
As I say, I learned something every week. I learned something every week. Now, Alex, but, but here's the problem, though. See, now you're making people switch from complaining that Centinela is raggedy and needs to be redone to their inconvenience because it's being resurfaced. You're not really fair.
Yeah, I'm telling you, can't win for trying, right?
All right, all right.
Make them all happy.
All right. Councilman Dion Falk, District four.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. I just want to start by just saying it was really a wonderful celebration of our organization, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, my, my sorority. We had a fabulous mammogram event at St. Mary's Academy right here in Inglewood. We were able to get fifty residents tested for breast cancer, and it went really well, very well organized. And we have some pictures. We celebrated our Community Service Day by turning the Forum pink and green. It was really beautiful. I want to give a special shout out for Mayor Butts for helping us turn the Forum pink and green. As you can see, it's beautiful. It was all over social media all weekend. So we're really proud of the work that we've done in the community last week for our ninety-third Far West Region Conference. So thank you to everyone, all the community members. Thank you, Mayor Butts, our City Council members for all of the support. We appreciate you. And also, I want to let you know we're getting healthy in District four. So I'm going to have a line dancing event next Friday from six thirty to seven thirty. We're going to have a DJ. We're going to have refreshments, and we're, it's going to be at Crenshaw Imperial in the parking lot. We're going to section off a big portion of the parking lot, and we're just going to dance and just have some fun, lose some weight. I need to lose some weight, y'all. I got them COVID nineteen pounds I'm dealing with. So, so anyway, it'll just be a lot of fun. I'm hoping that our Mayor and council members can come out there so they can let you know that they have some rhythm and they know how to line dance, so they're going to come on out.
I danced in a circle.
That's all right. You'll be my partner. You'll be my partner. And lastly, I do want to wish everybody a happy Cinco de Mayo. Have a good time, but celebrate safely. Let's all continue to be safe and, and no drinking and driving, but it's a fabulous day, very fun. So please celebrate, but again, celebrate safely. And lastly, to all of our wonderful mothers in District four and in the City of Inglewood, wishing you all a happy, happy Mother's Day. To myself, too, I'm giving myself some love. I have two babies. So have a wonderful Mother's Day, and that's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Plenty, thank you.
Hey, DJ, play that song.
Hey, Ray, let's do it.
Councilman Morales.
Thank you. Let me thank the Mayor ahead of time for turning the Forum green, white, and red on Thursday, Cinco de Mayo. Thank you, Mayor. And we're going to dance in the back right now. Listen, I think it's great. This is, uh, we're in a great time. I hear Alex talking about the inconvenience about Centinela Boulevard. I went through it with Century Boulevard for over, well over two years. And I'll tell you, now I am so happy that we went through that. I mean, the residents love it. It is an amazing improvement to the City of Inglewood that was long overdue, and I know every resident in District two will love that. That being said, improvements continue. Part of it is we started implementing our parking program on May first in my district. Right now, we are just south of Arbor Vida between La Cienega and La Brea, right, Louis? And so there's some confusion as to, you know, what it means and how it's going to break out and what the intentions are. The truth is, this is supposed to improve our quality of life. You know, there has been a problem throughout the years, but now with the stadium, it gets even worse. Of course, there are folks who have excess vehicles who aren't going to be happy with it, but the folks, but even them, they can make an adjustment and be, be great. It's, it's going to be great to protect the parking for the residents, especially during event times. I just want to say that during the year, during football events and forum events, I would get calls about folks parking and Ubering to the game, actually parking in front of homes. But at the time, we had no rule that we could enforce. They could go there, mark the tires, and, and we could wait seventy-two hours to do something. The truth is, by then, the games are over, the concerts are over. We had to do something. This parking enforcement and the gap of time given, which is short, two hours during the games and, and during everything else, will allow staff to help protect that and take these folks out of their routine. All change is difficult. All change is difficult. We're dealing with it. I'm going to be sending out some notes just as soon as I clarify some stuff with staff, just so people know where we're headed, and it's, it's based on an improvement. To help in my district, we're opening up the parking lots from eight P M. to eight A M. During this whole transition period, that, that is something that, that happens. But we need you to register your vehicles. We need you to register them. Come get your two tags. Come apply for the additional ones. Once we make a full assessment, you know, we're going to work out the kinks, you know? Nobody wants this thing to hurt, but we want it to improve. And it, it's much like, we've gone through so much, not only in the district, but in the city, of change, and, and a lot of it was, was stuff that was very difficult to accept at the beginning, and now we've made improvement. So that's part of it. That's the goal. So look out for the notices and come get your cars registered because we already started, right? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you get started.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask that you close the meeting. And a longtime friend of mine, I mean, longtime from Monroe, passed away this past Monday, and I'd like, his name is Felton Beadie. I'd like you to honor him by closing this meeting.
And Mayor, I, I forgot, and I'm sorry, Mayor, for a good new off, but mothers, I forgot to say Happy Mother's Day. I cannot forget that.
It's already been taken.
No, I, I have to tell you, you know, we, we all only get one, and we all know what they mean to us, and I'll, I'll just kind of show it right there, but I'm also married to one, so Happy Mother's Day. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Last week, I filled in for the Chair of Metro, you know, I'm a past chair, to celebrate the tenth anniversary of the Expo Line at USC. But before we get there, we're going to talk about the, well, he, he brought it up anyway. I'll talk about it now. So anyway, this is the tenth year. Next to me is Pam O'Connor. She preceded me, preceded me as the representative of the Southwest Corps. me as the representative of the Southwest Corridor.
Where's that location?
That's, that's right, on the lawn, one of the lawns on ESC.
Okay.
Facing exposition. But so Pam preceded me for fourteen years, and so she was there. She also was past mayor of Santa Monica and was on the city council when I was chief of police there. These are just fun facts, right? Then we move from there to the Kappa Alpha Kappa ninety-third, ninety-third Annual Conference, Regional Conference, and just a quick thing about that pink and green at the forum. Okay, so the forum has programmed in certain days, red and green for Christmas, they have the Cinco de Mayo colors programmed in, but anything else, they have to have someone come in and do the programming. And so Councilwoman Falk asked me to see if we could make that happen. She didn't know how difficult it was, nor did she care. And so I was talking to the forum general manager, says, hey, can you do this like for four or five days? All these Kappas are coming in, and we want them to see the form pink and green. And she says, well, Mayor, you don't understand, it's, it's not that simple, and everybody would be having us do it, and we have to bring in a programmer. And I said, Jeannie, you don't understand. Councilwoman Falk has told three thousand people that they're going to fly in and see these colors, but it'd be okay if I wasn't speaking at their event, so we got to make this happen. And bless the forum, bless Jeannie Lincoln. They made it happen, and it was a big hit. Chris Schabel was the emcee, and he had a helicopter come over at six in the morning, and they put it on the morning news. So Deonah did good. And then we go from there. I think I just want to show the trophy one more time. Oh, no, the Girl Scouts, the Girl Scouts had, they opened their Innovation Center, it's probably a few months, couple months ago now, but I just want to tell you, the, the Girl Scouts moving to Inglewood was such an addition to the total picture of this community of what we're about, and this Innovation Center is going to teach girls skills that are ordinarily are not offered. And then finally, we are going to be the site of the college playoff game, not just the championship, but the final four games of the college football series will be here in Inglewood. And so we just keep on going.
Real good.
Okay? And then, you know, I'm wishing everybody a Mother's Day. My mother's passed so instrumental in my development. Mothers not only bring us into the world, but they make sure that we're ready to meet the challenges of the world. So happy Mother's Day to everyone. And I'm going to close in the name of Felton Bailey, who passed away last Monday, and we're adjourned.